I need to start to open this meeting. You know, they could be a high risk of bad weather, so everybody stay safe, okay? So the first thing we have is a presentation to Fairfield County Foundation. If you folks wouldn't mind coming up.
I didn't know you were gonna have to find an audience today.
That presentation up on the podium.
I'd like to make some recognition and celebrating the Fairfield County Foundation's 35 years of accomplishments and community impacts. Whereas the Fairfield County Foundation has engaged in a range of activities and endeavors, has awarded beaver grants and scholarships since its establishment in 1989. And the Fairfield County Foundation is innovative, building a thriving, thriving community that supports quality of life in the community by bringing resources and people together, helping create an attractive environment, supporting workforce development and empowerment, and creating awareness about the importance of inclusion. And Fairfield County is continuously growing and evolving in the Fairfield County Foundation's presence and developing needs through this support of local positive which benefit residents and will benefit residents for generations to come. Now therefore, the Fairfield County Commissioners and Subway formally better its recognition of 35 years of accomplishments and community impact by the Fairfield County Foundation. All those associated with the Fairfield County Foundation past and present, including experienced executive director Amy Iman, board of trustees and staff, are grateful and grateful that they're dedicating themselves to the dedication of time and energy and endless commitment to this community.
I can do that. I just want to say how proud we are to accept the 35 years of impact in our community. We couldn't have done it without our generous donors that donate the funds so that we can help benefit the nonprofits in our community and all the students that would go to colleges and trade schools. So we're looking forward to many, many more years serving the community. So thank you so much.
So we'll move on. We have public hearing for the Vala Township New Community. If you'd like to pick that up, please.
Thank you, Commissioner. This is a new community authority that will be set up over a subdivision in Vala Township, Rockford Homes. This was covered earlier this year with an earlier hearing, but their council was concerned a little bit about the timing, so they just asked to redo it just to make sure all the i's are dotted and t's are crossed. So what this would do, it'd set up a new community authority board, which we would vote on, the commissioners would vote on next week. And it would be able to levy taxes and other things on that subdivision in order to buy that to be immediately.
Is there anyone in attendance who would like to keep in favor of this community authority? Is there anyone in attendance who would like to keep in opposition? Anyone in attendance who would just like to make a comment? Terrible close, thank you. So the commissioner sets aside this time to make up.
Yeah, we have Chaslyn Carter, the current transit director, and Erin Kennedy, our incoming transit director here today to share a 2023 and review of transit. You can just hop on up here. I think Ben has got the PowerPoint and your videos.
All right. Good morning. I'm Chaslyn Carter. I'm the outgoing director. We've come today to give you a review of Transit 2023 and update on the state on the city county transport. So in 2023, operationally, we had a great year. We performed 128,489 passenger trips, an increase of 17,230 trips from 2022. Of those trips, 88,360 were on our loops and 40,129 were on our demand response. We traveled 494,647 miles. With all this with an one-time performance of 98%. I put a little kind of explanation of no shows on there that kind of impacts some of our on-time performance. And we averaged about eight a day, so that does give a little impact on that. Our denials, it was pretty much an average of 11 per day, which from the beginning of the year and the end of the follow or previous year, that is a great improvement. A major contributing factor of this was the extra support from the county and the city. You know, we still have some work to do, but Transit is steadily increasing their trips performance. Current staffing, we have 10 administrative staff with nine full-time drivers and 25 part-time drivers. I like to think of, I like to think of the administrative staff as the gears that keep Transit flowing, but our drivers are the heart and soul. Our most significant project of 2023 was the addition of our fifth Langister loop. The goal of this loop was to have a consistent connection to the go-bus stop, thereby increasing connectivity to Franklin County. So we added this fifth loop in February of 2023. The pilot ran from February to September of 2023. ODOT approved the pilot, becoming a permanent route in October of 2023. As you can see on the little chart here, that the, these are the pilot trip numbers from February to September. And then I went ahead and added last month and you can then see the increase in trips just, you know, from the end of the pilot from last month, we performed 1,213 trips on just that loop alone. Some of you are here already, but in 2023, Langister Fairfield Public Transit continued to put high priority on our safety goals and it paid off by winning the SOAR award from a higher transit risk pool. The SOAR award is given to the agency with the lowest cost of risk in our tier in a higher transit risk pool. We are actually the lowest in every tier with only 14 cents per 100 miles. Ken Reed, who is the Risk Assessment Director at OTRP, said LFPT should be proud of this award as it is a tangible result of their efforts to provide a safe and efficient transit system to the citizens of their community. So major kudos to our drivers and admin team for making safety a priority every day. In 2023, we provided free services to our community. Some of the special events that we provided were the Pickerington Touch a Truck event, Langister Festival shuttles, Lithopolis Honey Fest shuttles, Fairfield County Fair shuttles, Candlelight Tour shuttles, and Pickerington Earth Day cleanup shuttles. Okay, now I'm going to hand it over to Erin, our incoming new director, for some update.
Kennedy, the incoming transit director. As many of you know, the county will be taking over transit from the city effective July 1st. So Chaslyn, I just wanted to give you guys some quick updates on how the transition is going. First though, I wanted to take a minute and just say thank you to those from the county and the city who've been working together so hard to make this transition possible. It's been a pleasure seeing government working so efficiently. You know, that's not always the case. So thank you all. Legislation, the Langister State Council met this past Monday, the 20th, for the first reading legislation to transfer the Langister Fairfield of the transit to Fairfield County. The next reading is scheduled for April 8th, and then April 22nd is the anticipated date for the adoption of that legislation. We've been working closely with Ohio Department of Transportation to ensure that it fits all the boxes. As far as this transition goes, one of the big projects that we're currently working on is transferring the titles from all of our buses and sport vehicles from the city to the county. So you can imagine that's, that's quite an undertaking. So that's one of the big things we've been working on. Additionally, representatives from ODOT will be scheduling a site visit and then, and just make sure that everything's staying on track. There are many facets to transit. We've been working closely with multiple county departments, including ICE, Finance, Human Resources, Workforce Development. And so we're looking at not only transferring the hard assets, but then also looking at policies, just making sure that, that everything is in place properly and doing our best to anticipate any obstacle that may come up. That way, the transition will be as flawless as possible when we hit that July coast deadline. Once the policies and procedures are finalized, we will begin informing the current staff of those changes and letting them know what the expectations will be moving forward. LFPT is currently going through an ODOT-funded transit development plan, which will encompass the next five years. This plan will conclude on June 30th, which lines up nicely with our July 1 transition date. The next advisory committee will be April 10th at 2:00 PM. It's a virtual meeting, so if any of you would like to attend, just let Chaslyn and I have this new invitation for that. We're excited to see what this plan will recommend and how we can implement. It started working with the county at LFPT a little over three weeks ago. And I just from the beginning just noticed how everybody just works together so, so well, which I appreciate. Transitions can sometimes be awkward and weird, but this hasn't been my experience. Everyone involved has been incredibly supportive and helpful because we all have the same goal of helping the community. And so one of the things that stands out to me is the staff doing this to help each other as well as the community. So I'm excited to be a part of the team that wants to do the best for the community. March 25th, this past Monday, was Transit Employee Appreciation Day. So the Assistant Director, Michelle McCready, she went out to the community and recorded several Transit users telling the drivers, "Thank you." So I wanted to highlight a couple of these quickly, just to show how important Transit is to the community. But the gentlemen are unable to get a license, and so Transit takes them back and forth to work every day. So it's just a great benefit to the community. I just wanted to highlight that quickly. Thank you guys so much for your time. If you had any questions, please feel free to reach out to Chaslyn and I.
Commissioner Davis, questions?
Yeah, just want to appreciate you folks and all the work that many people are doing on the transition. As with any multimillion dollar, complex transition like this, there are bound to be some problems along the way. For example, when the city introduced their legislation last week, a week earlier than we were told it would be introduced, that resolution had some errors in it. Most importantly, all the discussions I've had with the prior mayor, the current mayor, the prior safety director, the current service safety director, and members of council have included an ongoing commitment by the city to fund transit operations at their current level. And then somehow, some way, for some reason, I think there are some elements within the city that don't want to make that commitment. That's a, that's a huge, huge deal. And given the situation with that problem unresolved, I've directed our staff to examine all unwanted scenarios. As county commissioners, when we can, we should think of every possible scenario that might unfold for a variety of issues. And I just want you folks to know that I think moving Transit from the city to the county is the right thing to do. And as you folks probably know, or learn here in a second, Transit here locally has some history to it. For example, it used to not exist at all. And then at some point, the city contracted with an outside vendor to provide Transit. Then the city took it in-house. Now the county is offering to be that vendor. And then some people are pretending like they can't figure out how to pay us. They used to pay a different vendor. They can pay a new vendor. And so for lawyers to pretend like they can't figure out how to do this, it's shocking to me. I don't have a license to practice law anymore. And after 30 years of mentoring lawyers, I really don't feel like doing it anymore. But lawyers that only come up with a problem and don't follow through with a solution, really only half lawyers. So I don't want you to be confused or nervous or anxious about our commitment. But we're gonna get the deal we made, but there won't be a deal. I mean, we're just not. But I'm mucking around here. If you think about Transit and the finances, as you folks best understand them, the absence of that commitment from the city would be devastating to operations. And not taking a wounded duck like that. So we're gonna fight through it. We're gonna offer solutions where others won't. We're gonna keep our commitments. And we look forward to the transition. I just didn't want this conversation to occur without an awareness that we're, we are dancing on the head of a pin right now. And folks are gonna need to keep their promises for this to go smoothly. I appreciate y'all.
Just supported Commissioner Davis. We, we feel like Transit is one of the, you know, three legs of the stool that we've been talking about for a couple of years now, right? Workforce development, the commissioners obviously is working on, the housing issue that I've been working on, the invitation that Commissioner Davis is working on. That issue is particularly relevant here in the city of Lancaster. So we need to continue with the partnership with them. I am confident that they will understand that clearly and make that happen, and we'll move forward July 1st. But we have a deal. They're gonna live by the deal.
We're good. Thank you, folks.
Thank you.
Thank y'all.
So the commission sets aside this time for residents and taxpayers to make public comment. If you wish to do so, please approach the podium, give your name and address, and the limits of three minutes will be strictly enforced. Who would like to be first?
I was sitting close to, I gotta be clear. I would like to bring attention to a couple of things that are concerning your line right now and should be for everybody. One thing that I want to mention right now is that in May, WHO, World Health Organization, is coming due on what they're coming up with as far as control of all health throughout the world. See through the UN, of course. And they are expanding their scope. And when they do this, that treaty was put up a couple of years ago. And the date for closure on it is in May. I don't remember the exact date. But they're giving a Director General of WHO full responsibility for everything connected to health, anything with food. Also, they're talking about many other things that are included in it. And so we need to flood the Senate and the House with telephone calls that we do not want to lose our right as individuals to make what we think is best for us. And that's what's gonna happen when this happens in May. It's going to direct all of us as to how we're going to have health, food, transportation. The whole works is under this plan and is under the direction of the UN. So with that thought in mind, I would like to close with a prayer. Lord, we're in a critical situation right now throughout the United States, America, and it's time that those that like freedom, like myself and others that I know, we need the right of doing what we can do as far as our own health, what we put in our body, what we accept. And it's only right that this is why the founders of our country put it together. God is in control. We need to look, God, for the answers that we're trying to find. Help us, Lord, every one of us, to do our part. We praise him in the name of Jesus. Amen.
Excuse me. Commissioner Levesey, could you give us a little clarification? In your introduction for this section, you said that it was open to taxpayers and residents. Are those simply the taxpayers and residents who live within Fairfield County?
Generally, that's the case, but in this particular case, I'm going to make an exception. So it's open to everybody here in attendance.
And then may I kindly request that anyone who approaches the microphone state their address so that we understand where they are coming from?
That's correct. That's what is required because we put that in the amendments. Thank you.
Judy Steeman, 2444 West Quette Road, the other half of the sky. Okay, the era of informed consent is over. How many have heard about the, the 21st Century Cures Act? Yes, the ruling went into effect on January 22nd of '24, which means it's already standard practice across America. So what is it? The act was designed to accelerate the discovery, development, and delivery of 21st century cures and for other purposes. And the act granted the National Institute of Health legal protection to pursue high-risk novel and vaccine research. And these provisions capture all the necessary architecture required for much of the evil that has transpired over the past four years. Buried, buried under the section 30 was the provision to develop an informed consent waiver or alteration of clinical investigation. The concept of informed consent, consent, something we take for granted today, is relatively codified in the Nuremberg Code of 47, 1947. And a lot of people don't know the core Nuremberg code, but Hitler was responsible for bringing that about, not that he was good, but anyway. The state alone acting through the government will decide what is considered a minimal risk and will determine appropriate safeguards to determine the rights, the safety, and welfare of human subjects. Notice the term "subject," not patients, not persons, not individuals, not citizens, but subjects. The use of the term "subject" also serves to determine dehumanize. And it's essentially a step toward denying citizens the right to have rights. This ruling allows researchers and misguided evangelical billionaires to pursue dangerous experience of experimental programs and novel high-risk programs, no longer requiring researchers and pharmaceutical companies to obtain patient consent. Remember, the first tentative step as the US government tests the waters to see what if, can it get away with? But I'll tell you what, this is what the Nuremberg trials were all about. But look at what Hitler did to his people. And now we're going to be able to inflict on the government is going to be able to.
My name is Selena McCord. I'm at 8640 Ruffner Road in Millersport. And my husband Paul and I, and my kids, we have six kids, we live on five acres of farmland. And we are surrounded by 80 acres of farmland from our neighbor's family. But a little bit more about us, Paul and I, we've been married for 19 years now. And I'm an educated mom with a master's degree in business and human resources. I've been homeschooling my kids for 12 years now, and we're very close-knit family. My husband and I run a business. We've been doing that for 13 years now. And we enjoy our time at home. We enjoy our time outside. And we moved to the country. This was our goal. I grew up in the country. My great-grandpa's farmland, we grew up and enjoyed that. So we're happy to be where we are. And my question is, can you help us protect against a solar industrial farm plan that will affect our family? This is us right here. And this is the 80 acres surrounding our farmland. And this is the industrial solar plant. According to a lot of research I've done, I'm just gonna make a few notes that According to a lot of research I've done, I'm just going to make a few notes that stand out to us. So the lot of the farmland, the research shows that the soil cannot be restored to use after these leases are done. And again, like I mentioned, I grew up on family farmland. It means a lot to me. Storm damage, just speaking of that, I know a lot of you have heard of the hailstorms in Texas. And that's something that's going to continue to happen, the storms. Obviously, Ohio has had a lot of tornadoes, I believe sixteen more than tornado or tornado valley, the different parts of the country, we've had a lot. That's a concern for us as a family that lives right in the middle of this, what storms could do. Also, as we know, the solar panels can be cracked and broken, which can leak toxic chemicals like cadmium, lead, polyvinyl fluoride into the atmosphere. These are linked to cancer as well. I love to plant, I do flowers, I do gardening, just all of that going into the soil makes me sickened. There's a lot of bees. To us, this matters. We actually have a lot of bees on our property. The owners before had, they actually had honey that they would produce there. So they had a lot of bees and they're still here. It actually destroys the bee colonies.
Thirty seconds.
Okay, and the the birds are killed, they don't completely know why. We do know the solar panels get up to a hundred and forty degrees, which can kill the birds as they are drawn to the shiny panels. Dangerous fires can happen, which only can be extinguished by chemicals. That's a concern for us on our land. Fairfield County is known for, the meaning of Fairfield County is beauty of the fields, beauty of the fields. So that makes me sad to know that. Thank you for your time, I know my time's up. And we appreciate that we have this board, that we have liberty in our country to talk about these things and be considered. But thank you.
Hi, I'm Beth Cottrell, thirty-five thirty-five Cedar Hill Road, Amanda. And as you gentlemen know, we live within a half a mile of the land that has been leased for the Carnation Project. I really just came today to say thank you, that you're opening up the discussion. I know you've been listening to me for two years and you have been listening. So there are a lot of orange shirts here, and I know they are very hardworking men and women. But there you have a lot of opportunities for jobs. And we really hope that you are able to provide exclusionary zones throughout Fairfield County and let them have all those construction jobs that are open in central Ohio area already. Thank you.
Second, one, three, two, eight, five, State House thirty-seven, resident of Waltham County. Keep us free, I won't know what the rest of you, agenda shows. This is the right time to speak to over issue, that's fine. I am here to say that you got a lot of questions to answer for so many folks here. Commissioner Davis, you just referred to this case of authority and concern all possible scenarios on how to unwind it some of that. I think that same consideration needs to be showed for these industrial solar sites. For bold that have been reclaimed and put back farmland. Those questions are long time off being answered. And for us to consider that technology will catch up with reclamation of our we haven't figured out how to get rid of the nuclear waste. We still have it stored on sites and haven't put that problem to bed yet. I don't know that we can necessarily throw that problem out there for future generations to try to clean up. The nuclear effort, the coal pailings that burst out of their ponds and into rivers. There's a lot of things we haven't figured out yet. And as far as the Ohio Power Siding Board being able to help us make these decisions, I understand we might have two local representatives out of Austin, Ohio. And depending on them, our siding board was created at a time when we were trying to pick out coal plant sites along rivers, taking use of other resources, not just flatland. That's been straight with one chemical, the trees and the broad lights there. I understand flatlands probably are a good idea for the solar. But that's because it's easy to make a product. And if we've got strip mine land, parts of our Ohio, it seems to be that it'd be more likely that we could continue to produce food on these areas that or these strip mine ground be dedicated to that. Don't want to say I'm here for it, we're just, we have a lot of questions that need to be answered. Thank you for studying this issue of your work.
Be next.
Good morning, I'm Rainy McGuire, seventy-four, Coburn Drive, McDermott, Ohio. I know I'm not local, but I represent the hundred and thirty-five members out local forty-one-three in this county. And they think the biggest issues here are not only for the hundred and thirty-five members that had the possibility to go to work, but there will be more job opportunities for people to eat jobs, paying billing wage is very lucrative in an area such as this. My second comment would be, I've heard liberty thrown out a couple of times. And I just think if it's these farmers' land, that's the decision they make, that they make. Thank you.
Is required your address to?
Seventy-four, Coburn Drive, McDermott.
Hey, who would be next, please?
I'm in Sperry, I reside at four by nine five Christmas Rock Road, Lake Shore, Ohio, I'm a lifelong resident of the Purple County. I am with Opera Engineers, local eighteen, being local eighteen are favorite solar farm projects for us, not for more jobs for our union brothers and sisters, number one, or two. It is a great way to protect our ground from abuse of other projects. And so they also promote drainage, but they soil erosion. And most of these soil farms do plant pollinator-friendly grasses and flowers to help keep pollinators as our honey bees thrive. And that being said, thank you.
Who would be next, please?
Kevin Elder, sixty-eight hundred Baltimore Somerset Road, Pleasantville. I appreciate the commissioners looking at exclusionary zones. As you heard earlier, there's jobs. I encourage you to look at the long-term production for the land, not just the one-time construction job. These resources are extremely limited and they're critical for agriculture. There's been no research that shows they can restore it to what it has been or hopefully make it better. The only research that's been shown is the damages done during construction when it's not inspected and has not had the right construction inspections specifications. Last, in twenty-twenty-two, Ohio lost four hundred thousand acres of farmland, four hundred thousand in one year. The five years, these are USDA stats, in five years, the nation lost twenty million acres of farmland. That is a significant amount and it's not sustainable. And we need to look at each acre that's there. I would also encourage you to include the the Eastern Cottail in the exclusionary zone, simply because our siding board has not received anything yet and is still determined what the areas that will, whether it's covered or not by Senate Bill two. Again, thank you, we live right next to this, our drainage will be going into it. And we have watersheds of five hundred acres, two of them coming off of this proposed Eastern Cottail site. We've already seen issues with drainage when it's not maintained or repaired in increased runoff. And we want to make sure that we have millions of dollars of income coming off that. You wouldn't tear a factory down if you can't fit something else there. I would encourage looking at what the long-term research is on restoration because there is none.
Thank you, thank you.
Good morning. My name is Francis Martin. I live at ninety-three seventy Cattail Road. I will be living in the middle of this industrial solar plant. My property will be negatively affected by this project. Thank you.
Name is Tim Nicely, eight-three-five-five Cattail Road, right in the center, heart of Silverville. I had a couple commissioners come over. And real quick, I have a tape here that I want to play. But most important, Senate Bill fifty-two. I don't know about everybody else in Fairfield County, how you're going to take it. We demand answers when it comes to, are they totally in or they act, one or the other? I've heard that their lawyers are fighting about it, grandfathered in. You guys know, your lawyers know, everybody knows. So it's time that you guys let the citizens of Fairfield County
Our country and our town. That's why we have laws. Landowners have rights to do with what their land, what they choose to do with it, but not to put solar panels and affect other people in their property around their area to make their lives miserable, to wish they never bought the property that they moved on. Nobody wants to live next to a solar farm with its toxic waste. It destroying rivers, waterways, creeks. There is not one thing that is renewable about it. Everything they use is made from coal, from the trucks to the backhoes, smoothing out farmland, destroying the soil, packing it down like concrete. They bought the lie that they will be returned to its original state. Every farmer knows that's a lie. The efficiency of the solar panels, twenty-five to thirty percent on a good day, less than that on cloud cover. Ohio is not the best place for sunshine and they admit that in their pamphlet.
Thirty seconds to conclude.
So what do they do? They just tack on more acreage of solar panels to make it to the efficiency that they want, covering up the beautiful ground which God gave us. The electric will be produced to big corporations where it is needed. Intel, Amazon. If they need electric, have them put them on their roofs, but solar where belongs, not on farmland. So they went beyond zoning, decided to move up to Ohio Power Siding Board.
Thank you. Who would be next?
Hello, my name is Chris Keller. I do not currently reside in this county, but I can tell you I pay a lot of taxes here. The address is one-thirty Cherokee Lane, Logan, actually Sugar Grove. The property we own is on either side of Deep Cut Road off of thirty-seven, actually directly across the road from the Hoover Farm. And I want to, I bring that up because fifty years ago, there was an hearing like this where there was a group of citizens who were trying to stop the Hoover family from installing a ammonia tank. And the fear of the area was talked about by, there was a respected doctor by the name of Dr. Mastel, who came to the hearing and said that he had items in his medical bag that if he was driving past that ammonia tank at the wrong time, could cause the whole thing to explode and destroy the county. And not that all of the claims that are being made are that degree, but some of them are a little bit extreme. The solar panels are sealed, it's unlikely they're going to crack. They're on removable I-beams that are driven into the ground. When their purpose is done, they can be pulled back out again. The units can be recycled and farm can be turned into agriculture. The cover crops that they put under it, it's not a cover crop, it's a protective, low-growing plant that protects the soil from erosion and also feeds the pollinators. So a lot of the concerns they have, I think, are unfounded. The other thing I want to say is that things are changing. Fifty years ago, I'll go back to that again, there were no warehouses along US forty, you could drive from Aetna to Reynoldsburg, not see anything except farmland. And so things are always changing, the use of this farmland is going to change. I have an offer on my desk at home from an out-of-state developer who wants to pay me twice the agricultural value for my land because they know that we need more housing in the area. And if you want to look at the reason we're losing farmland, don't look at solar panels, look only at the urban sprawl and all the little five-acre plots around the county. I think it's amazing when I drive around, all of these signs saying save the farmland are on five-acre plots that people planted a house on, no longer agriculture production. And it's the, and it's the influx of population into the rural, urban, rural areas is causing the loss of farmland. It's not, it's not solar panels. So I'm sorry if I ruffled some feathers with that, but I had to say what I felt, so thank you.
Who's next, please?
Morning. Aaron Brown, twenty-three thirty-three Nate Street, Danville, Ohio. So I'm not around from this county, I'm Stark County. My name is Aaron Brown, I'm the Renewable Energy Governor Affairs Rep for the IB, International Brotherhood of Electrical Workers. I cover the Ford District, which includes Ohio, West Virginia, Virginia, Kentucky, Maryland, and DC. So we're obviously, we're seeing all these renewable energy projects, solar projects coming to the area. Obviously, we want to listen to the same concerns, you know, we may have family that live beside these as well. You guys may have heard from Pat Hope, he's the Business Manager here in Columbus, six eighty-three. His territory covers eight counties, including Fairfield County right here. In my role, I'm working all over our great state of Ohio, rebuilding best-in-class projects that provide critical energy infrastructure that diversifies our electric grid. These solar projects are providing a good union wage job with benefits to our members, adding value to the community and the economy. We're thrilled that EDF has chosen IBW as a partner to get the job done. And we will guarantee that our skilled men and women will build a best-in-class project right here in Fairfield County. We have over four hundred members right here in Fairfield County and fifteen women township alone where the project is located. The Eastern Cottail Solar Project will support over six hundred and seventy-five direct construction jobs and long-term jobs for operations and maintenance. In Columbus, we have a state-of-the-art JATC as a joint friendship training center that is unrivaled and includes solar curriculum. The men and women in the IBW The men and women in the IBW are currently building solar projects across the state, and we hope to construct and maintain facilities here in Fairfield County. Our members will proud to be part of an economic development that has a lasting positive impact on the communities they live and work. The revenue from the solar project will support local schools, critical services, your EMS, your fire, police, and help offset the tax burden for the Fairfield residents. Utility-scale solar is creating thousands of jobs, long-term operational jobs, and local manufacturing right here in the state of Ohio. IBW firmly supports Eastern Cottail Solar. Thank you for your time.
Anybody, okay?
All my friends.
Sharon Pimer, thirty-four sixty-four South Bank Road in Walnut Township. You know why I'm here. Uh, at last week's meeting, you started the conversation concerning, um, including all thirteen townships in Fairfield County to be considered exclusionary zone for industrial solar. We're not against solar, we're against taking up farmland for large industrial solar. So there was a question, uh, well, actually, there was a statement made last week about a concern that county would get sued. Well, this is, this is a letter that you received yesterday and the prosecutor's office received yesterday. It's to the commissioners and, um, copied to the prosecutor's office. It says, I am, uh, dear commissioners, I am sending you this letter on behalf of citizens of Fairfield LLC who have asked me to reach out to you with my observations of the resolution you are considering in order to designate unincorporated areas of the county as a restricted area in which utility-scale solar projects cannot be approved by the Ohio Power Siding Board under substitute Senate Bill fifty-two. During the commissioner's public meeting on March twenty-sixth, twenty-twenty-four, a disclaimer was re, was expressed over whether a solar company could sue the county for restricting the development of a solar project that is pretty far down the road, quote. However, the Ohio General Assembly has already resolved that concern by defining such a project as a grandfathered or partially grandfathered project under Senate Bill fifty-two. Senate Bill fifty-two provides that a solar project may be grandfathered or partially grandfathered if it has made significant project, progress on its application to PGM for permission to connect to the electric grid. A project that does not receive a complete system impact study from PJM or did not pay the fee for PJM's facility study by October twenty-twenty-one has no grandfathered status. A grandfathered or partially grandfathered project can still proceed with its application for approval by the Ohio Power Science Siding Board, even if the project is located in a restricted zone. For example, if the commissioners establish a restricted, restricted zone that includes the Eastern Cotton Tail Solar, and in parentheses, Cottail, project area, it will not affect that project if it is grandfathered or partially grandfathered. Conversely, including Cotton Tail's project area in the restricted zone will stop the project if it is not grandfathered. We do not know whether Cotton Tail Solar Project or any other project, solar project is grandfathered. Typically, the public cannot obtain this information until the project's PJM payments and records are disclosed during discovery in Ohio Powers, in Ohio Power Siding Board proceeding. However, there is no good reason, well, I need to read the rest of this. However, there is no good reason to carve out an exception from the restricted zone for any solar project, even if it is grandfathered, since the restriction would not affect a grandfathered project. Senate Bill fifty-two authorizes you to restrict all non-grandfathered utility-scale solar projects. A solar company has no legal action against the county for exercising its authority to do so. By including all unincorporated areas in the restricted zone, you can ensure that you have not missed the opportunity to stop a project that is not grandfathered. Since the public in Fairfield County widely supports a ban on all utility-scale solar projects in, in all unincorporated areas, my clients urge you to establish a restricted area for all unincorporated areas in the county.
Thank you.
That's with Jack Van Clay, attorney with Van Clay Law.
Hi, my name is Greg Weber, forty-one sixty Canal Road Northeast, Pleasantville, Ohio. I'd just like to say, um, I grew up in southwest Ohio. I spent the first thirty years of my life there. And during that period, there was a uranium processing plant down there. And it was the thing for the future, for energy, which the world demands more and more of each day. And we had refineries that were built all over this country because of the fuel needs. Well, it wasn't until many years later that the effects, the birth effects that were happening because they were built out in the country around farms and the leaching into the fields and that. The animals were consuming that through the grass and the negative impact that the you, uh, refiners were having also caused an ultimate end to those. Now, my father-in-law was a pipe fitter by trade. Just because those things closed didn't mean that he never worked again. There were still union jobs to be found out there and people went on with their lives. But I'm just saying that means people here today in this room want to make right decisions for our future generations and families. It's my feeling that the runoff from these solar fields into the water tables could ultimately cause a lot of health issues down the road. And I urge you to make decisions here that will be right for our future generations. Thank you.
Hello, I'm Jerry Starnes. I live at nine-four-zero West Wall Room, uh, Mandala. I, like some of the others, I am actually surrounded by the seventeen-hundred acre carnation solar. I mean, cross road, all three. Um, actually, it's a big deal to me. I'm an engineer, so I educate myself on all, I've created a website called this-solarthing.org. I'll educate others on how, how, our, certain, taken a lot of this thing. Um, I live in a house that was built in eighteen eighty-nine. You know, I've restored the whole home and now it's going to be more. And my other problem thing is the way these projects are done, it's seventeen hundred acres. Wouldn't there be more planning than this and you just happened to find out? Otherwise, I would never know. I found out a year and a half after this, it's all been done. Speaking of reclaiming the land, I'm a farmer. One of them that leased the land became ill. I helped him farm. I drove a quad track with a thousand bushels of buggy in the wrong part of the field. And I heard about it because I compacted the soy. Right? And now we're going to run it all over, let alone, I figure there'll be a hundred and six thousand pilots. I throw out that number by looking at the decommissioning plan from Yellow Bud and, and doing extrapolation and figuring how many it might be. Listen to that for ten months, twelve hours. And like I say, I'm not against solar. I think it's just going to be done in a smart way. Does this power have to be injected here? I've read the regional transmission engineering plan from PJM, all those things. I'm happy to tell anybody about all of them, what it means and what you guys can do. You can identify restricted areas, but also once there's a public meeting, you can file a resolution rejecting. You don't even have to have a restriction. So get on my soapbox a little bit, but you can tell I'm low against it. I think you've done better. Thank you.
Anyone else? One twice. Doing three times, but thank you for coming and thank you for all your comments.
Amy?
Do you need to go later?
I'm just briefly, to be sure, uh, there are a few resolutions, uh, that for the, uh, one is, uh, according to Gutt, you got an obstruction and the other one is giving on it to enter to the contract. I just wanted to highlight that because I think we might have to make a change.
Just in addition, when the resolution comes, Rochelle has.
It's a pretty complex contract, so that's why we're not doing it all at once today, like they normally do, but stay on track, nothing. But that's all I have.
And thank you, A, for your review. I know you're, you're too busy, you know, for some pressure to move that up, so thanks for your help on that.
On the county of the administration.
I'll try to be quick, let's move us along here. Thanks, Jeff. This afternoon is our first round table of the year. Um, and we will have that out at the Ag Center. And John is keeping an eye on weather in case there was something that would be happening that, uh, would, uh, make sense for us to cancel that meeting. So I will make sure to let everybody know if we can end up going that direction. The County Z News update, which is our external newsletter, was released last week. And also part of that was an announcement that Fairfield County received the top workplace award from Columbus CEO and USA Today for the third consecutive year. Jeff, want to add anything to that?
We're just very thankful that our employees find, uh, their careers with Fairfield County to be valuable. And we're thankful to them for their role in our conference.
Thank you very much. Uh, sure.
How are you doing?
Me or Jeff?
Everybody. Let's talk about the roundtable and the weather issue. So what, what, what's the protocol there? What is the time at which that decision would be made, which is sufficiently in advance of people already having begun to plan their afternoon or their travel?
So I'll just send this to John, um, after your morning meetings here. And see, he hasn't called eleven, uh, so we'll be assessing after that and we can communicate out very quickly with everyone.
Call. National, National Weather Service.
The, the river, excuse me, Route Five, Swet's Creek, Ohio.
Where's the round, round table located?
The Ag Center.
In the safety bubble. Inside. Now you're just making stuff up.
Get outside bolt.
Yeah. Well, I would just err on the side of caution as you go through that decision-making process. Unless there's something of great magnitude that would be lost as a result of cancellation.
You. All right, moving on, administrative approvals. The review packet does contain a list of those. And for today's voting meeting, there are nineteen resolutions, couple of note here, uh, resolution authorizing the approval of a proclamation for Fairfield County Foundation celebrating their thirty-five years, which we did present to them earlier this morning. Uh, also have a resolution approving the establishment of Violet Township New Community Authority. You're having deja vu, uh, you should feel that way, uh, because we did go through this process and had to rescind that, start that over due to some timing issues. And you did the, uh, earlier hearing there that we had for that. Next, um, next week, we will have a resolution where we are appointing the board members for that. Anything to add on that, Rick?
No, just thank you for your patience and willingness to.
Amy already spoke to the, um, contract there for the OU Engineering Lab at the Workforce Center and authorization for me to sign, uh, that document going forward. We also have a resolution approving the creation of the Fairfield County Workforce Advisory Board. So just a reminder, this is what came out of the, uh, capital budget, uh, last year. And this is for purposes of approving credit-bearing programs offered by Fairfield County. So there were members on this advisory board and four, uh, correct, uh, were appointed by the commissioners. There's five in total, uh, the one that was, um, not appointed by you all happened to be, uh, currently held by Louis S. McNeil, uh, for OU. I forget his really long title, Rick. Nice.
Provosting.
So he is already on that, but you all will be appointing four others, which includes Rick, Marie Ward from the Education Service Center, Jared Tudor, and, I hope you remember, uh, Jennifer Johnsbury from Midwest.
Representing the area.
That's on for today, a little while getting that up and running, but we have concluded that process and are here for that piece. Also have a resolution approving the final plat for Stonehill Estates, Section One, located in Bloom Township. Um, and there is a miler plat for you to sign today for that as well. Josh, anything on that? And a couple more agreements for inmate housing agreements for the sheriff's office. This is with Athens County and Galia County. And then lastly, we do have a resolution approving an additional water line easement between Eastland Fairfield Board of Education and the Board of Commissioners. Tony, do you have anything on that? All right, no budget review, correct, Bart?
No budget.
We'll keep moving along here. Calendar review and invitations received, Rochelle.
For calendar review, the Records Commission will meet next Tuesday at eight-thirty AM prior to the commissioner's meeting. The Seeds Have Changed Earth Day Arbor Day Celebration and Award Ceremony will be April twentieth and ten AM at Rising Park. And the Fairfield Medical Center Foundation's Philanthropy Awards Event will be April twenty-fifth at five PM. The correspondence received is listed on the review agenda and will be in the minutes for anyone to review. Thank you.
Thanks, Rochelle. That's all, Commissioner.
Extra days, oh, business. No, I'm fine, thanks.
I should fix.
Yep, to, to, uh, just continue the process with the solar issue. Last week, we started the conversation. Thank you all for coming out to provide us with your thoughts on it. Uh, the next step in the process is to have a map created that we can actually start our internal debate on. So today I'm asking our staff to put together a map that would ban industrial solar in the thirteen townships, uh, and give some room for the Eastern Cotton Tail Project. And we ask that because, uh, they are so far along in their process. And because, um, I believe, and we can debate it if we want, um, but I believe that, uh, if we were to ban them in spite of, uh, Fairfield's legal opinion, um, that we would be sued. Uh, and there's, you know, high likelihood that we would not be successful in that. And so, uh, want to provide some, some leeway for them in that map. Uh, and then as that map is presented, we can have our discussions about it. President, provide, please. So just on process for folks that may or may not know, um, how the statute visions a ban curry for advice that the process starts like it has with a discussion about banning. Presentation of a map, Commissioner Fix is requested. The first vote, I believe, that we would take, or something like a vote, I guess, could be a simple motion, would be to publish the proposed map. That initial vote or motion is just that, a vote or motion to publish the proposed map. It's not a vote on whether to approve the map or to approve the ban. As we understand it, once we would make that decision to publish a map, we would be required to wait at least thirty days before taking action on the proposed map. So just to run that, let's say that staff has something of a map together on April ninth. That would not be eligible to be voted on until it had been posted for thirty days. So let's say staff runs out that afternoon or maybe the next morning and post the map consistent with the motion. Let's say that would happen on April ninth, looking at. Let's say that would happen on April ninth, looking at sometime May ninth, May tenth, somewhere in there, I don't know what the Tuesdays are, before any action could be officially taken on that. So, that's our understanding of the process for going through this. And I'll join Commissioner Fix requesting the map.
Sure, fix any business.
Uh, none, thank you. Appreciate it.
Yeah, I want to come back to an issue that we touched on earlier as far as the transit transfer is concerned. I want to make clear that I support the transit transfer. I appreciate the city of Lancaster having handled that service for as long as they have. There is currently one route that goes outside the city of Lancaster. I think in the future, there should be more. I think for a county-wide transit system, county government should handle it. And I will continue, as one among many at the county level, to advocate for that successful transfer. But that transfer will occur only under the terms and conditions previously agreed to. Thank you.
So, update from elected officials and others. There's your box, it's good to have your daughter here last week. We'll be big jokes about rocket science, you know, we're talking about your daughter.
Thank you very much. Yeah, I'll defer any comment to the roundtable this afternoon, if we hold it. Or engineers' office.
Nothing today, thank you.
You haven't highlighted here in this venue, the weights and measures video. There was a public service announcement about skimmers that are found in various areas. That has happened in small counties now. We didn't know that when we created the public service announcement, but Preble County has witnessed these types of things, that gas pumps, that you see the seal broken, and you're using your credit card. All that's needed by a criminal would be blue chip technology. So, we created a public service announcement to help people be aware of those things. I thought it'd be good to highlight that, since the news came.
Nick, Rick, all those guys that were there helping. Rick, anything else? John? Everybody aware?
So, everybody's got the alert system on their phone, is that right?
Hopefully.
Mister, can I make additional comment, please? I wanted to say thank you to the folks that have joined us here today on both sides of the issue. Most importantly, I wanted to thank you for your courtesy in making your, your cases and your presentation on your, your different point of view. Some may recall, I don't know, it seems like it's been just a few months ago on some lady, I don't even remember her name or where she lives, but she came in here and she made a bunch of threats against the commissioners, like, you know, we're going to recall you, or put up a write-in candidate, or throw you out of office, or whatever. I say come ahead, and do the best we can. Thank you.
You're doing me, Bob. Foot session?
This name, I mean, fuck.
Yes, Resolution twenty-two four dot two dot C. I would like it to approve as amended with the third whereas identifying the amount of the addendums. Addendum one would be thirty-one thousand, and addendum two, sixty-nine thousand. The resolution currently states that the addendums are one hundred thousand dollars. It has the two combined, we'd just like to break them out.
Per move minutes for March twenty-six, two thousand.
So moved.
Discussion.
Mister Fix?
Yes.
Mister Davis?
Yes.
Mister Levacy?
Yes.
Motion's passed three-zero. From the commissioners, Resolution twenty-two four dot two dot A. Resolution authorizing the approval of a proclamation.
The commissioners, I move items A, B, C as amended, D, E, F, and G.
Second, discussion. Folks, we can keep it quiet in the hall, please. Call, please.
Commissioner Fix?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Mister Levacy?
Yes.
Motion passes three-zero. The Fairfield County Board of Developmental Disabilities, Resolution twenty-two four dash four dot two dot H. A resolution to approve a reimbursement for shared costs for internet services paid to AT&amp;T as a memo expenditure for Fund twenty-sixty.
So moved.
Second, discussion.
Commissioner Fix?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yeah.
Commissioner Levacy?
Yes.
Motion passes three-zero. Fairfield County Economic and Workforce Development, Resolution twenty-two four dash four dot two dot I. Creation of the resolution for the creation of the Fairfield County Workforce Advisory Board to approve credit bearing programs to be offered in Fairfield County.
So moved.
Second, discussion. Over call, please.
Commissioner Fix?
Yes.
Mister Davis?
Yes.
Mister Levacy?
Yes.
Motion passes three-zero. From Fairfield County Emergency Management Agents, Resolution twenty-two four dash four dot two dot J. A resolution authorizing the approval in advance from the General Fund to EMA on twenty-seven oh eight State Homeland Security Grant Program brand.
The Fairfield County Emergency Management Agency, I move items J and K.
Discussion.
Commissioner Fix?
Yes.
Mister Davis?
Yeah.
Mister Levacy?
Yeah.
Motion passes three-zero. For Fairfield County Job and Family Services, Resolution twenty-two four dash four dot two dot L. A resolution for approved additional appropriations by appropriated from unappropriated into a major expense object category, Fund twenty-fifteen.
Under Fairfield County Job and Family Services, I move items L, M, N, and O.
Second, discussion.
Commissioner Fix?
Yes.
Mister Davis?
Yeah.
Mister Levacy?
Yes.
Motion passes three-zero. From Fairfield County Regional Planning Commission, Resolution twenty-two four dash four dot two dot P. A resolution to approve the Stonehill Estate, Section One, final plat.
So moved.
Second. Call, please.
Commissioner Fix?
Yes.
Mister Davis?
Yes.
Mister Levacy?
Yes.
Motion passes three-zero. From the Fairfield County Sheriff, Resolution twenty-two four dash four dot two dot Q. A resolution authorizing the approval of a contract with the Fairfield County Board of Commissioners, Fairfield County Sheriff's Office, and the Athens County Board of Commissioners, and the Athens County Sheriff for housing prisoners in the Fairfield County jail.
Fairfield County Sheriff, I move items Q and R.
Second, discussion.
These are both at the same rate that once you passed last week at a hundred and seven per diem.
There's no discussion, but they sent some people. Call, please.
Mister Fix?
Yes.
Mister Davis?
Yes.
Mister Levacy?
Yes.
Motion passes three-zero. For Fairfield County Utilities Department, Resolution twenty-two four dash four dot two dot S. A resolution approving an additional water line easement between the Eastland Fairfield Board of Education and the Fairfield County Commissioners.
So moved.
Second, discussion.
Commissioner Fix?
Yes.
Mister Davis?
Yes.
Mister Levacy?
Yes.
Motion passes three-zero. Payment of bills, Resolution twenty-two four dash four dot two dot T. A resolution authorizing the approval of payment of invoices for departments that need board of commissioners.
So moved.
Second, discussion. Call, please.
Commissioner Fix?
Yes.
Mister Davis? Mister Levacy?
Yes.
Motion passes three-zero.
Very good.
So, are we journeying or are we recess? So, we're in recess.